Begin with an executive session, and I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. Tonight's executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares. That an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five star building four versus the town of Sherburne. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three and seven. And Suffolk Construction versus DKM four forty nine mass four forty four parentheses two thousand and seven live town library.
And they do so declare that we need to discuss this item in an executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote Eric.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well. So you want to turn the recording off? Please amend or approve the agenda.
There's a public comment session if somebody has a public comment to make tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated in forty eight hours in advance of the meeting may be added. Item number one is our special town meeting set for October seventeenth, twenty twenty three, and the first item is vote to set the quorum for special town meeting. The next one under item number one is review of draft warrant audible language. Seven thirty, we have an Ed Stark ever source public poll hearing. Shawna Kyle is coming in place of Christine Crosby and Sean Colleen will be here to discuss that. Item number three is the reconstruction of the Washington Street Maple Street intersection project update and discussion. Jeremy Marsette and Sean Colleen will discuss that with the select board. Item number four is discussion regarding chapter ninety, section seventeen C lower speed limits and request to amend. Special speed regulations in the downtown business thickly settled district, Sean Colleen. Item number five is consideration of sending a comment letter to Mass Howard and guiding Coolidge Street Homes forty B Marion Nutra. Item number six is the update on legislation for the North Sherburne Water Sewer District, which is Marion. Item number seven, which is a consideration of approval of select board regulations for town codes. By Jackie Morris and she has asked that we amend the agenda and take that off until sometime in September. Item number eight is consideration of accepting of a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from Wegmans for the Veterans Day celebration. I could just give a quick update on that. Item number nine is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant draft minutes of August sixteenth. And the next meeting is scheduled for September seventh. Item number ten is consideration of routine business select board and town administrator reports.
Move to approve agenda.
Okay, do you, did you want to modify it though Eric to hold off on the speed restriction thing because the police chief can't be here?
I mean, I leave that honestly to, I mean, Sean knows my concerns, so I don't want to bump him, you know, I copied you and sent Sean and Chief a concern there. If one, we can just keep it on there, talk about my concerns. If Sean wants to do the presentation.
The chief actually is here.
Is that okay?
We can't actually answer some of his concerns.
Right.
With data, but we can discuss it. Maybe it's worth discussing. Even if we don't vote on it tonight. Talk to you guys.
We actually, you know, we can probably take it out of order because we have twenty eight minutes before we can start agenda item number two.
Yes.
That's a hard start there, you know what I mean?
It's a hard, hard start for the public hearing, exactly right.
In some hearings a little late, you just cannot start them a minute earlier. So if you want to take something out of order, like if you want to.
No, no, Tom's here, so I guess we'll, we'll do that, but let's, I tell you what I'm going to do. If there are no other changes, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of item seven, the select board regulations that Jackie's asked us.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Aye.
Stephen.
I just want to clarify your amendment, the agenda item number four is also being moved up to number two, right?
Well, we're gonna have to, just like the Board of Health does when they have hearings, we're probably gonna have to move several around because we, we have to have hard start to start that at seven thirty, so we'll fill the time between now and seven thirty with whatever we can fit in.
Okay, I just didn't know if you were move, if you were moving the order of agenda items around, whether that had to be in the motion right now or not, I didn't know the answer.
I don't think so because we have to do it on the fly, but Paul, you can weigh in on that. Sometimes you can't do that because we don't know how long each one's gonna take.
Honestly, we've taken agenda items out of order so many times without moving to approve and stuff like that. Actually eliminate something or you actually add, but you can't add, you know, that taking out of order, I don't think is that big a deal unless it's a hearing.
Great, then I.
Okay, Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, everyone. And so I'm gonna start with a brief public service announcement that James Arena DeRosa reached out to me about today, the whole group today. There's a Monday night at six thirty PM and Sherburne Town Hall in person. Is a Sherburne Small Business Roundtable discussion and James Arena DeRosa is planning to attend, so. What we did is there's at least three, Eric and Marion and I plan to attend. Anyway, so we had Diane posted as a select board meeting, just so we wouldn't have any quorum issues. So it's posted at six thirty PM for Sherburne Small Business Roundtable. I think Ed Rose is still the chair of that group. Any questions about that?
Can I make a public comment when you're done?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So this afternoon I went to the wake for Michael Kickum. And I wanted to take a moment just to celebrate some of the things that he did for the community, particularly the Memorial Day event that he shepherd for so many years. Also wanted to celebrate his role in Veterans Day. And then there were all these Eagle Scout Courts of Honor that he was pressed. So it was a sad day to be at the wake. And I wanted to honor him. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, so I think why don't we do that then and, and take the speed restrictions so Tom doesn't have to stay here too long. So I would propose that we jump to item four, which is regarding chapter ninety setting section seventeen C on speed limits. Do you want to describe it, Sean or who?
Yeah, I can describe it and then sorry, I'm staring at my screen and then I'm, I'm gonna ask to share my screen. So we, this last town meeting, we adopted chapter ninety seventeen C. And eighteen, but seventeen C is what we're talking about, which in essence allows us to reduce the statutory speed limit through town. Anywhere it's not posted to twenty five, where it was thirty before. We adopted that and have notified Mass DOT that we adopted it throughout town. So every zone that's not posted right now is a twenty five. And, and Mass DOT recognizes that. What we're, what I'm asking for or proposing is that we also take the zone that I consider downtown. And we have two different maps that we're proposing. To ask them to, to lift the regulatory speed limit, which is thirty throughout the entire zone and allow us to lower it to twenty five. Reason being that is the entire act, as you would say, of sixteen and twenty seven, not just downtown, but as the map shows, it's, it's beyond the Catholic Church. It's beyond Town Hall and then one map shows it beyond Douse's, one map shows it not, not quite that far. And then beyond Lake and Elliot, which is our second most dangerous intersection in town. And is very close to the exit of Pine Hill, so. That's essentially what we're asking for. Now, the select board needs to vote on that. Doesn't need to vote tonight, but it needs to vote on it prior to myself and Jeremy asking Mass DOT to basically lift the regulatory speed limit that has been in existence. So any vote that we would take would be, would be basically pending that acceptance from Mass DOT and, and possibly moving some of the other speed zones. We don't know. Sometimes you don't drop a forty all the way to twenty five or you don't drop a thirty five to twenty five, so the engineer may choose to, to look at that, but that's what we want to propose. At this point. And I can share the screen or just go right to questions.
Can I, you can make just one clarification on the townwide twenty five miles an hour. So Mass DOT, Jackie, the town clerk did send in a certification, a town meeting accepted. You know, the relevant Mass General laws and Mass DOT has acknowledged acceptance. However, until they, they're, the townwide twenty five is non-enforceable until the select board votes and speed limit signs are posted. So just to, just kind of adding a little more detail for the townwide twenty five. So that they're currently not enforceable until the select board votes and the signs are erected.
And I'm eager to erect a sign, so that, that's part of the persistence to ask. Go ahead, Paul.
So Paul, go ahead and then Eric.
So my I think it's a no brainer and I think it's great that you, you want to do this, but doesn't the statute exclude state routes? And isn't this sixteen and twenty seven?
So though it would exclude mass highways, but sixteen and twenty seven are not mass highways, they're town routes, they're just numbered routes. We don't have any Massachusetts state highways in, in the town of Sherburne.
That's great.
So I would support the, the biggest map that has the biggest coverage. Thanks.
We can't, where do you house?
Eric has some concerns about the effectiveness of it though, so I.
It's the same discussion I had last time and I'll just restate it that, you know, based on the Mass General laws, which actually allow for these, um, these kind of townwide, whatever called home rule, home will speed zone of twenty five miles an hour. And the associated Mass DOT regulations from twenty seventeen state you cannot use radar to enforce in these areas here. And I do know from experience that getting a, what do you call it? A hard Mass DOT speed regulation is almost impossible. These probably date back to the forties, they really do. They're near impossible to get. If you try to get them, they almost always go up. You know, just because it's based on the eighty fifth percentile and so on and so forth. And I just have a hard time. I want to be very convinced. I've asked Tom to show me the case law. I want to see the case law, which allows the, the, you know, use of radar to regulate within these softer townwide zones. And if it's not clear to me, I'm gonna ask town council's opinion on that, just to verify we can do it. So it's kind of a big deal. To give up a hard, black and white Mass DOT speed regulation to save five miles an hour for something that, and I'm quoting other Framingham police here, actually is unenforceable. I just think it's, um, I want to be convinced before I vote for it or be, I would encourage other people to do the same.
That makes sense. Do you want to weigh in, Tom? And I know you're on vacation, so we appreciate your.
No, no problem. Yeah, so there is, there is that case law that speaks directly to Eric's concern. I did forward that off just a few minutes ago, but yeah, and I know Eric, you had some other concerns and some data you were looking for, which I can get you if you want to hold off until voting on this for another meeting. But this case law is specific to that issue that you raised. Whether you can be adjudicated guilty of operating at an unreasonable speed absent any proof of the distance, which is where it talks into not using radar. And they, they actually adjudicated this, that that distance wasn't actually an element of the crime. And so that, you know, this, it really sets forth, and this is their language, prima facie evidence of a statutory violation. So the purpose of that rule is, is, is to just to put more burden on the Commonwealth to prove it, but it does not, does not preclude you or require that quarter mile observation and does allow for radar. I mean, the radar is a big one. It's crazy though. The guidance document says a police has to follow a car for a quarter mile and ensure that its average speed exceeds the, the limit there. And I, I asked around a little bit and I haven't found a single community that's actually enforced any townwide zone here. So I'm, I'll look at the case law, but you can understand my hesitation here. If it was like thirty five miles an hour, maybe it's worth a gamble, but you're gonna say five miles an hour for something which, you know, and I'll, well, maybe I'll have Chris also look at the case law if it's not clear to me. For five miles an hour, we're gonna risk removing a Mass DOT. I'm, let me ask Jeremy, because he's been doing this longer than I have in roadways. Have you ever seen a Mass DOT approved speed regulation change?
Yes, I have one and it was very difficult.
Yeah.
Generally, they're not, like you said, they're not in the habit of changing speed limits on a case by case basis. But it is my understanding with this new Mass General Law that the town has now accepted that with requests from the select board, once the town adopts it at the town meeting, the requests of the select board to Mass DOT, they will essentially just supplant the request over the special speed reg.
It makes sense. I get that. I definitely get that. To me, it's all enforceability. Even the other questions I had for you, Tom, frankly, secondary to the enforceability. That's all my thing there. You get someone smart driving through town, you know, forty miles an hour and then you clock them and then, you know, they decide to fight it. So let me ask Sean something then. How difficult is it to reestablish this? Let's say we remove this thirty and it does fail. Let's say someone, some savvy lawyer in town fights it and succeeds. How will Mass DOT be willing just to reestablish this thirty with just a vote, our vote?
So I, a couple comments to that. One, I think this law allows it and I reached out to the engineer. My intent was to have the vote behind us pending the engineer's approval and then ask the engineer lift it. And, and my understanding is it's, it's gonna be a black and white sign that says twenty five instead of thirty.
But it says statewide underneath it.
Not, no, I think that in the zone, I believe it's not gonna say that. Those townwide ones will just be at the town border. But to your question also, a couple of things are gonna change in the next twelve months, hopefully. There's gonna be a roundabout at right smack in the middle of this thing in front of the town hall. That's designed for twenty five miles an hour approach. So no state engineer would, would argue that. The intent is you're going twenty five before you get to that roundabout. That's the design. That's what's the intent is and you can't make it through it any faster than that. Natick is, is going to be putting splitter islands or a splitter island on Route twenty seven. There's no reason we couldn't implement some of those or ask to implement some of those on Route twenty seven to start calming the traffic down before it gets to Douse's. I mean, I, I spent the better part of a week, Jeremy was out there with me earlier before we cut that massive ash tree down. The traffic is going incredibly fast in front of Douse's Orchard, Douse's Farm Stand. It's not going twenty five, it's not going thirty, frankly, coming out of Natick. So no one would argue it should slow down, calm down. So these are the tools that the state has given us to try to do that. And, and I'm, I'm eager to see what the engineers will say. They're, they're kind of swamped. The answer I got was tell them you have to have an answer today. You might get it tomorrow. So I, I've reached out for that, but in my intent with bringing this forward was to try to get the, the select board backing to go to the state to ask. They, they may not like exactly where we put it. They may want to do some studies to figure out if we can palm the traffic down before it gets there. I mean, no one wants a forty drop into a twenty five. We, we don't have that. But I think there's a thirty five that's really close on South Main Street before you get to the, where we're proposing the twenty five, but that, that's for them to help us look at.
Yep. No, I, I thought like it, oh, I'd say, so I guess my concern is twofold. One, I'll read the case law, just like I said, the enforceability. And two, the ease of putting back the thirty. If they can, if they can assure us that, yeah, the select board just votes and the thirty goes back up. That's gonna put me at ease. It is, and we can get back a, a true hard, like, you know, Mass DOT regulation. Be interesting to find out if the twenty five can go without the townwide thing underneath it. So that's all my concern and I'll look at what, um, what Tom just sent me.
Well, I think we should, you know, we won't take a vote tonight. I would prefer that you feel comfortable because I, I think your concerns are important. Is there any other select board input?
Just a comment.
Sure, Paul.
So there's a lot of people in the world, myself included, who actually drive according to the speed limit signs. And so even if there's a smart lawyer who's able to zigzag through town, do it at whatever speed he wants and challenges the speed limit. Most of the people are gonna be plodding along like me. And if I see a sign that says twenty five, I assume there's good reason for the twenty five and obey it. And if we get any kind of reasonable obedience, the whole community is benefited. Because one of the problems of living in Sherburne is people go too fast. And there's a lot of roads that don't have sidewalks and aren't safe for pedestrians and even for bicyclists. And yet cars are zipping around. To the extent that we can slow things down in town, I think we improve the quality of life of everybody. So I'm willing to take a, a gamble here. That'll work out if we take advantage of this tool.
Well, I think Eric's of the same mind on the outcome. He's just trying to assert what's the best way to reach that outcome because higher probability of occurrence is you're gonna get rear ended if you're going to speed limit.
You're probably only enforce on off hours. There's no way you're going even twenty five during rush hour through town, you know. I just, without enforceability, it's, it's almost, it's a kind of a joke log. That's all I want to, sorry, I should raise my hand. If people have their hands raised.
So Marion, you had your hand up first, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I have another question for Sean. I mean, in my experience and this is, this is an N of one here, not a big sample. Driving around town, I, I'm like Paul. I look at the street at, at the speed limit signs and I obey them. But there are long stretches in town where there are no speed limit signs. And they may be told at the town border that it's twenty five unless, unless posted otherwise. But I wonder if there's a value, a Sean, or a plan for installing just more speed limit signs around town, just to remind people. You know, I know we want to limit signage and Paul wouldn't like too many speed, too many signs, but on the other hand, people do need to be reminded. And every time you see a speed limit sign, you look at your speedometer. If you see no sign, you're probably not gonna look at your speedometer. So.
If you want my response, and I think the chief would agree, and I'd love to hear his input, but I, more effective signs, I think, actually works really well. At the change of speed limits, which there's always a sign. But we have a couple that Addy made programs to tell people they're being naughty or nice.
Yeah, I love that.
Those are very effective. For people that don't actually always drive the speed limit, you feel yourself lift because it tells you you're, you're bad. And, and I, I think there's probably a handful of places we should add those. The town did go on kind of a binge with the non-regulatory speed signs all over town. Eric's neighborhood was littered with them. The Gouldings, the forest, there was just yellow signs all over the place. No one paid any attention to them and the police couldn't enforce. So it's better that the yellow signs be warning you that you're about to fly off a, a short curve or something else. But I think some strategically placed electronic signs might, might really do the trick and, and by the way, I, I think you know, especially if we were to choose to, to drop the limit before it gets to Douse's corner. That traffic coming out of Natick is certainly not going twenty five or thirty or thirty five. And that's a great place for a sign to, to get people to start to slow down. So I agree and strategically, I would also say that probably ninety five percent of the speed limit signs are at the actual point where the speed limit changes in town. And there's nothing stopping us from adding another one if it's a long zone that remains the same speed limit, we can remind people. If it's a stretch like that, there might be a few stretches on Coolidge like that.
Yeah, that's what I had in mind, exactly.
All right, I just want to keep it going here. Stephen, you're next, I think. Oh, did you, do you know, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, so I've got a comment and a question. Comment is basically just I support Eric's position and I'm probably just going to go whatever way Eric goes. The question is if and when the townwide speed limit goes into effect in the various places where the posted speed limit is higher than twenty five. Like for example, I mean, I'm, I go down hunting every day and it's thirty. Are those signs going to simply be removed or will they be replaced with a sign that says twenty five townwide?
No, it's wherever not posted. So the old, if you picture town and, and split it up by Old Road, New Road, almost all the old roads have speed limits that are posted. It's not gonna change those. If you picture the neighborhoods that have nothing. And by the way, Green Lane has nothing because nobody would have done that. Those are gonna default to twenty five rather than thirty. Everyone in the state was thirty up until they passed chapter ninety seventeen C and now they allow you to go to twenty five. So those will change. The Old Orchards, Page Farm, McGregor Drive, none of those roads are posted. So those are gonna default to twenty five. It's not gonna change anything that's already posted, except what we requested in downtown if, if we do.
Okay, Eric.
Yeah, so I, I skimmed through at least the summary of the case law that the chief sent and I, I, I think we have to get a town council opinion. It's more about the accuracy of radar versus following. It has nothing to do with chapter ninety seventeen. The guidance document that I sent, and I'll read it for everyone here specifically says with the enforcement of MGL ninety seventeen, and keep in mind this came out in twenty seventeen, thirty or forty years after the case law. Instantaneous radar or lazy readings are not accurate. To be in violation, the motor vehicle must be shown to have been in excess of these speed limits for at least the entire distance associated with each respective limit. I just need the council's opinion and unless, I thought it was a case law about using these ninety seventeen using that requirement and the fact that this was written after that case law and this law didn't exist when the case law was done and the case law has nothing to do with the general, because case law, I think, has to do with specific black and white regulatory limits, using visual or following versus radar and accuracy of radar. This was specifically written in for these provisions with townwide. And you see my hesitation, I just.
I think it makes sense, so we won't take. Tom.
Yeah. No, yeah, just a couple of things. One, just to agree with Sean on Marion's comment. I think some strategically placed signs and some of the electronic signs would be a good idea to really, just to reinforce some of the things that we're trying to do and change some behaviors. And to your concern, Eric, there is a section, that section two talks specifically to the prima facie ninety seventeen enforcement. It's probably three quarters of the way through the case, but we can talk more offline about that and it probably will be good to get Chris's opinion.
Okay, I just read the summary.
Yeah.
So we can add this to our, whatever it is, September, what is it, sixth, our next meeting? To, if we have a town council's opinion by then.
I, I wonder if we should split the votes though. I mean, term meeting approved the townwide regulatory and we can't put signage up until the select board approves doing it. I doubt the select board's gonna renege on the townwide statutory limit, so.
We can do that, I think. We sort of voted because we voted with all the town meeting voters, but.
Right, you endorsed it at a town meeting.
Yeah.
The second vote is specific to downtown and that, that I think encompasses Eric's concern, so. I would ask for a vote on the, on the townwide, just so we can post the limits of town.
Yeah, I'm aboard that. That's a great idea.
Did you just make a motion, Paul?
Yes.
And you, Eric, you're seconded in it?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Eric.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So we have that and we'll just add it to the agenda for September sixth to discuss the second part with Petri, he gets back to us by then. We okay with that? So we got, yeah, thank you, Sean, for doing that. And Tom, go have a good vacation.
I try.
Diane, we got two minutes. Are you there? You want to talk to us about the?
Oh, okay, I just.
Wegman's donation, I'm just filling void space here.
Sure, I just took a stab at filling out a form online for Wegmans for a donation. And two or three weeks ago, and I just kind of figured nothing was gonna happen until I got an email the other day, so. They're willing to give us a gift card for two hundred and fifty dollars that I can use towards Veterans Day and that's a, that's a big deal. Because Veterans Day is quite costly and I just got a hundred dollar gift card for Roach Brothers today. So that'll be three hundred and fifty dollars that we can put towards the Veterans. So that'll be three hundred and fifty dollars that we can put towards the Veterans Day celebration.
Well, your forte is accepting money, so do you want to make a motion?
That's what I was trying to do, move to accept the donations with our thanks and to apply it to the Veterans Day celebration.
Might have to have both kinds of food to keep them both happy. There a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
I'm well, and and thanks for taking initiative, Diane. It's great.
Thank you.
Very supportive. So it is right now seven twenty-eight, so I guess I have to wait till two minutes to open the public hearing and I'm going to start the public hearing by, I think I have to officially read the public notice. And then we'll do it. I don't think we can do anything else quickly.
We could do the consent agenda because I'm prepared to move to accept the consent agenda.
That's a good, good suggestion.
Good job. Thank you.
Yes, you just made the motion, I presume. Do we have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, Eric? Stephen? Marion? I am I as well. All right, good job, Paul. We got one one more down.
By the way, under the consent agenda, it says the next meeting is September seventh. You were talking about a meeting on September sixth, did you mean?
No, it's it's September seventh.
It is the seventh. That was just my error, Paul.
Boom, seven thirty.
My apologies. And it's seven thirty now, so seeing that we arrived at seven thirty, it's the start of our public hearing. So I'm going to read the announcement of the hearing. A town of Sherburne, notice of public hearing, the select board will hold a virtual public hearing on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M regarding a petition by N Star Electric, doing business as ever source energy to erect or construct and a location for such a line of wires, poles and other fixtures, including anchors and guys as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line. The said poles to be located substantially as shown on the plans made by K Rice dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-three and filed herewith upon along and across the following public ways or ways of said town. Farm Road, Northerly Side, approximately six hundred and sixty-seven feet east of Forest Street. Install one sub stub pole, number five ninety-eight S with anchor. Install one stub pole, number five one hundred S with anchor. Oral written comments have been invited. Now move that we open the meeting.
I want to recuse myself from this, so I'm gonna step up.
Okay, that's fine. So we will now open the hearing and who is presenting this? Is Sean presenting this? Or is EverSource present? I don't know.
Yes, I'm Shawna Kyle from EverSource. Rick Shafoni is here as well.
And I didn't recognize them.
Yeah, it's usually Chris, but she's off today, so I'm just stepping in.
Yeah, I saw that. Thanks for joining us. So do you want to share your screen or just describe what you plan to do? What do you recommend?
Um, usually we just read off what we're doing.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, and I I I mean, you kind of already said it, but basically we're just installing two stub poles to support the main main poles across the street.
It just will be a tension wire across them, right?
That's correct.
Due to the upgrade because making redundant power for South Sherbon, is that correct? We're drawing uh, power from Dover, so such as fed from two ends because we had that bad we had that bad block out where the the bottleneck where all the power comes through went down and so South Sherbon went down. Is that what this is for?
That's correct. It it's an upgrade of the entire system to a thirteen eight system from the old four K B.
I mean, I think the, I mean, overall intent of this is great. And I think it's a no-brainer. That was terrible. That happened the coldest day in ten years or twenty years, whatever it was. And from my job, I review the hundreds of these things and it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Well, I've replaced the nine radiator, so I'll second. So is there any discussion among the select board? Or Jeremy, do you have anything? Or Sean, do you want to add? Okay, do I have a motion relative to the request made by?
I think you have to ask for public input because it's a hearing.
Okay, that's fine. Is there any? Ginny has her hand up. You're going to get me on track here, Ginny?
Yeah, no, I just, there were only three of butters. They were all notified, so I think they're fine with it. But you will have to come in and sign in front of Jackie because she has to attest, certify that this has been approved.
Yeah, I think, can I do that tomorrow morning? You're going to be there, Jackie? I don't know if she's still here.
Yes, she is.
On the screen. I'll come in tomorrow morning because we also have to, I have to sign tomorrow morning the Coolidge Homes forty B letter to go to mass housing also.
Okay, um, sorry, Jeff. I have an eight o'clock doctor's appointment. So I was planning on coming to the office before I went to Mike Kiff's funeral.
Well, that's actually good. So if I met you, what would you think, like ten or nine thirty?
Yeah, I, yeah, who knows? I I think I'll hopefully because it's early, I'll get in right away, but I would say ten o'clock would be safe.
That sounds good.
It's, there is, there is a signature for three selectmen. I don't know if you need all three, could just be the chairs necessary.
Or we can, can we ask, this is for which, for the the?
No, 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 it's for the order for location of polls.
So can we delegate Diane to sign or do we have to sign it? In person?
I don't know.
Do two other people come in tomorrow morning and sign?
I can stop by.
I can stop by around ten, Jackie?
Yes, ten, ten, ten should be, should be.
Can you give a window of time, ten to when?
Well, the service is at eleven o'clock, so we're going to be going.
Ten to ten thirty, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I can also come back to the office in the afternoon, too, if people can't come until then, that's fine.
I could stop by between ten and ten thirty for sure.
Sounds good. We got a plan. Sorry to to be so slow here.
Oh, that's okay.
So did we vote? I've lost track now. We voted already.
We did not, we did not vote yet because you you needed to wait for a public comment, so you might want to just make sure you close the public comment.
I don't see any hands up. We only have twenty people on the call. So I hearing no public comment, I would ask for a motion to approve this public hearing on the poll location. Is there a second? Okay, Eric? Oh, he recused himself, excuse me, and I might as well. So it's for and Paul recused. Thank you for joining us and thank you for upgrading our service also.
Okay, have a nice night.
Okay, excellent. So we've now taken care of that one, so that we'll go back on the agenda to the special town meeting, item one.
Well, I think the the Rotary is next, the roundabout.
Well, but we, the special town meeting was before that, you know, we're kind of, it was, it was item one. I'm going back to the start of the agenda.
The 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 agenda was revised on Tuesday morning, I believe. To right now, the current agenda as posted on the webpage has number, no number, so the.
Number one is the special town meeting, isn't it?
In the background material, it's not.
Special town meeting is still number one.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Number two was the poll and number three is the reconstruction of Washington Maple Street.
We'll do the special town meeting and then Washington Street.
So is there any other articles other than Coolidge in the Water District at the special town meeting?
Well, let's get to that. We we're reviewing the war.
It's important if I sit on this meeting or if I step out or not. That's the thing. So Diane Nicely clustered the Water District and the what is it, the Coolidge Corner together, so I could step out at once. Now I got to step out twice if you're going to talk about, is there any other articles other than?
Think that even if you're accusing yourself on some items on the town meeting, you could vote on the quorum, though, because that's not related to the content of the meeting and usually have strong views on the quorum. Do you feel comfortable discussing that part?
Yeah, I'll step out. Just keep it clean. I've so far, I've managed to not touch this thing at all and.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, they're going to come back in to talk about the roundabout and then step out again to talk about the other two things, that's all.
I don't think this one's going to take long. I'll text you or Diane will text you. It'll be probably five minutes at most.
Someone kicked me into the waiting room, I think.
I just did.
So what what do people think about, and Paul, you've rejoined us? What the quorum, our quorum, as you know, is typically a hundred in a normal time and when COVID hit, we actually lowered it to twenty. And I think last year we set it at fifty, the last year, meaning the spring of twenty twenty-three town meeting, I believe the quorum was fifty. So Jackie, before we discuss it, do you want to give us your thoughts?
I I just wanted to let you know that Mary Wolf, the moderator, could not be attending tonight, but she said that she would go along with whatever the select board decided about reducing the quorum or not. So I just wanted to let you know that.
What what do people think? I'm actually sort of torn, but go ahead, Paul.
So as you may recall from the discussion for the annual town meeting about reduction of the quorum, I'm in favor of a smaller quorum than fifty, particularly for a special town meeting in October. It would be quite a tragedy to go through all the work and have advisory habits hearings select board going through articles and everything else and then not be able to have the town meeting. It's probably safe to have a low number because we always have a lot of people interested in the town government, and so this likely to be a fair number of people there, but you can't guarantee it.
Got twenty people on the stage, Paul. You have advisory committee in the select board and you're at whatever it is, sixteen voters right there.
Paul, when you say lower, do you mean lower than fifty or lower?
Yeah, lower than fifty. So how about thirty-five?
Do we know, Jackie, over the past few years, what's been the not the lowest quorum, but just like the lowest number of people that have been on a vote essentially? What is the, what is the low point of people who are still present and voting at town meeting?
Uh, probably around ninety? And that's, people start clearing out, but I mean, the highest and during the COVID years was about one year was like a hundred and six, another one was like a hundred and twenty. You know, so but then people start clearing out. That's usually only with the annual town meeting. People start clearing out once.
One major, one major item on the agenda, so it's not likely to be a clearing out kind of thing.
Those members were all for annual town meetings. This is a special town meeting.
I know. So Marion, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think we'd be, in spite of Paul's concerns, which I think are valid ones, or a special town meeting. I think setting it at fifty would be safe. I mean, for anything that's significant, it would be pretty discouraging for only twenty-five or thirty people in the town to make an important decision. So, but in this one, of course, we don't want these decisions to be put off at all. So I could go with twenty-five, with thirty-five or fifty, but I certainly wouldn't go lower than thirty-five.
Okay, Stephen, you're the only one who hasn't waited.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would tend to want to keep it at fifty, just because I just I don't like the idea of, you know, a fairly significant decision being made for the town by you know, only thirty-five people. And again, like you said, there's, I mean, there's going to be twenty people on the stage and you know, between all of the typical town governance people who just show up to everything, you're probably pretty easily at thirty-five already. And then assuming that some significant population who are affected by this North Sherbon Water District are going to show up out of interest. I just, I I I don't see how we would be below fifty, reasonably speaking. So I I would be in favor of just keeping it at fifty.
Okay, any other select board input? Uh, I I kind of lean towards Stephen's suggestion also. Bob, you want to provide us with some insights?
Sure.
Just introduce yourself. I know everyone knows you, but please just introduce yourself.
I'm Bob Murchison and I live on Lake Street. I just wanted to express my strong opposition to lowering the quorum. This is a really, really important decision that the town's going to make, and I think it would actually be tragic if it was made by twenty-five or thirty-five people. And if if if, honestly, I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think this is really just an intellectual exercise that you all and and my getting involved and expressing an opinion. I I don't think it's going to be an issue. I think you're going to have more than a hundred people. But just as a matter of democracy, I I think that you want to have at least a hundred people making a decision of of this magnitude for the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we're split, I guess. We, you know, I I take Bob's point, but we're actually not lowering it. We're, we were fifty for the April Town Meeting. So we would basically be keeping it the same. I I would probably go with Stephen and prefer to stick with I I agree with everything Bob said. I I would like to believe that there would be a large number of people there. I think our record was the turf field vote, whatever that was. But I I lean towards keeping it at fifty. So how how do you feel, Marion and Paul? If we make a motion to do, we only have, we have an even number here, so I don't want us to be in a two to two tie.
Can I say two things? First of all, and as a matter of democracy, people, all the citizens of the town are in fact participating in the decision when they decide not to come. The the reason why you have, some towns have no quorum requirements at all. People decide if they want to vote or they don't. Our our system of government does not have police come to your house and take you to the voting booths and tell you you got to vote. You don't want to vote? That's, that's in essence, you're still participating, but you're participating by making a choice, not to vote on a particular thing. So that was my comment, but I I'm happy to go with fifty. I think thirty-five is safer. The reason why I'm saying thirty-five is I just just am trying to respect all the work that's going into this. And and so I agree with what Bob said, that we're probably going to have a hundred and fifty people there. So this is probably just an exercise. But being a lawyer and looking at the consequences, I always look at what is the consequence if we don't achieve something? And if we don't achieve the quorum, that sounds like it's going to set back a lot of important things that need to get done. And where you have that as the risk, why take that risk? That was my point. So if you want to do fifty, I'll do fifty.
Marion, do you want to?
I'll move that we set the quorum at fifty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank you. Um, and then the next is the warrant article language. Do you wanna share your screen, Jeremy? Do you have the? We revised it. We discussed it two weeks ago, but I think we've made some changes.
Will do.
Please.
So as the board knows, the the warrant closed and there was no citizens petition submitted, so. Currently, the the draft warrant has five articles. Um, Article one being the North Sherburne Water Sewer District. Article two being a preliminary development plan amendment for the age restricted um, over fifty-five affordable. Project Meadowbrook Commons. Number three would be reappropriation of prior prior appropriated funds from Pine Hill. Axis Road and from the transfer station paving to go towards the construction of the intersection of. Washington Street and Maple Street towards the roundabout, which is another item on your agenda to talk about in more detail. Article four is the, you know, rescinding or removing the dog fund from the town's bylaw. And number five, this one is is a new request from your last meeting at at the request of the town clerk. To accept chapter fifty-three, section nine A. Uh, which is for establishing provisions for obtaining and submitting nomination papers for town office. Um, I'm sure Jackie could fill us in a little more details as far as what what that entails, but. Uh, that's currently what's on the draft uh, agenda. The the warrant article language for Article one was by special town council. Number two was from from Gino and Heather of Trini's office is assisting. There's a couple of minor changes we'll have for you there. Article three wording was from Bond Council. Article four and five are from town council. So we're in pretty good shape as far as the wording goes. And it's on you and scheduled for the select board to actually vote the warrant on September seventh, your next meeting. So happy to answer any questions on what we put together so far.
So so could we get an explanation for Article five?
Jackie, could you help?
Yes, sorry, I was just turning my video. So it's it's basically a housekeeping issue. Chapter fifty-three, section nine A allows us to put a deadline for accepting nomination papers. Which is um, basically forty-eight workday hours before they have to be submitted. Um, to be certified and I would, um, I would like this to be on the board so that we can. Use it for the town election, putting it on the April um, warrant, it'll it'll be too late. Because most of the nomination papers and stuff are due in um, March. So it's basically just a housekeeping issue.
Thank you.
And and sorry, Jackie, so what, how how does this change the procedure that is currently in place?
It it's it just basically. If if you don't, if you don't have this and people can get nomination papers up to the last minute. Um, also the same, they can, the same day they have to certify them. So this just basically. Shortens the window by forty-eight hours.
I see.
Forty-eight business hours. It hasn't been any kind of an issue in the past, but it's just. In order to do it, the town needs to accept it. And I, like I said, I just, I would like it in place for. The um, May election and putting it on the April warrant is too late.
Is that okay, Paul?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say out of respect for the town clerk, I would move to put Article five on the warrant and. I think we already. Took action on Articles one through four, but if we didn't, I would include them in a motion so that. The warrant would consist of Articles one through five.
I think we, if I'm not mistaken, we are we're deferring till September seventh to vote on the warrant. Is that right, Jeremy, in case there are other changes?
Um, you you can vote, you're slated to vote the the actual language of the warrant on on your September seventh meeting, so. Some of the language could could tweak a little bit here. Um, and I think, like I mentioned, Article two town council has a couple. Minor changes, but it is helpful if you all have consensus that these five articles would be included at the town meeting. At the special town meeting.
Yeah, we could just, I don't think we should vote though, because we may get some changes, particularly on. Some of the, uh, obviously not number five, but some of the other ones, you know. Is there a reason why you think we can't take the vote on September seventh, Paul?
No, it's just that I know from other towns, the sooner you have things. In motion, the more the people know what to work on. If they think that we're. We're not gonna have these articles or this lack of. Direction.
Well, there's only three articles, cuz one is just a stat, getting rid of the dog fund that we've never used and one is the sort of. Administrative one Jackie described. So there's, it's not like a forty. Item warrant, you know, there's basically the three bigger issues.
Yeah, but to to follow on Paul's comment, I, it may be uh, good for the town for any of. Any people working on these or wanting to get it out to the public that. This warrant be that that the the nature of the five articles that we're planning to get the language right on. I'll be out there as soon as possible.
Well, that's, Jackie's got a whole schedule for that. We can let her fill us in, but there there's a defined schedule for when things get posted and mailed and all that kind of thing.
Well, Jeff, what about a motion that would say, you know, subject to refining the language? The board approves the concept behind. The proposed Articles one through five and for their inclusion on the warrant.
Okay, I'm not opposed to that. Let's let Jackie clarify since Stephen, I'll have you go after that. What are you thinking, Jackie?
Um, sorry, I I just wanted to let everybody know that I cannot make the next select board meeting, so if there's any. Discussion that involves me, I'm gonna be in Europe. So um, I just want you guys to be aware that I'm, I can't make the next meeting in case there's any discussion about my articles or. Or whatever, but um.
Okay, that would uh, advocate for Paul's point here. What do you think, Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, I I agree that I I think that uh, final, not finalizing at least which articles will be in. Even if we accept the fact that language may change a little bit. I would just like to quickly get a review of Articles three and four. I mean, I know we discussed them last time, but. Uh, now, if we're basically finalizing which articles, I would just like to make sure that everybody understands um, what they are. Um, and I, my understanding is that with Article three, there is a time sensitive aspect of it, right? Because. E- essentially, the, I know we're gonna get an update in a different agenda item, but I just wanna make sure that. Moving the funding here does affect the sort of timing of the project and that. Pushing that to the annual town meeting would would delay it and then. Article four, I understand the underlying issue. But I do kinda wanna know, like, if we were to not have this Article four and push that into the annual town meeting. Uh, would there be any negative consequences? Cuz I I know Dan's not, Dan Sickel is not here right now, but I do know that he would generally be in favor of keeping special town meeting. Uh, warrant as lean as possible, so uh, even understanding the reasoning behind Article four. If that can be pushed off to the spring without any negative effect, I think it might be preferable to push it off.
So I can tell you what the negative effect is. Way back when. Town clerks weren't compensated from the general budget. They were compensated by collecting fees. And that was their compensation and the dog fund was one of those instrumentalities to compensate the. The town clerk. The fund is not used, but the, the article says shall be deposited, so as. As money comes in from those sources, it shall go into the dog fund. But it's not used anymore. For any purpose. So we're tying up money. Until. It's appropriated out of the dog fund. And it's really. Limited as to what we're supposed to be using the dog fund for. Under the provisions of chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E. So we've got this, this red tape, if you will. That's completely useless. And to ensure compliance means everything from our outside auditors to our. Staff have gotta pay attention to it.
Okay, I think I, I think I may have misunderstood last time then. I I was under the. Impression that the fund existed but was not being used, which means that there was no money in it, but. Does the fund, does, is there actually money in the dog fund currently?
I don't believe there ever was.
Right, that was my understanding last time is that it was established, but even at the outset, it was uh, illegal and so. What was never even utilized. And so I'm like, I understand that there's a, there's an issue there, but it's. It's been that.
It's my understanding, this was put in place some time ago, however, was never, never utilized. So the funds from dog licensing have have just gone to general revenue and not been placed in this dog fund, so. Um, there is no, there are no funds in it currently. But it is requirement in the bylaw that we do this, that we haven't been compliant.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, this, these are minor articles, Stephen. I get your point, but Jackie's just explained that we need to do Article five. Because it can't wait till next year. So the only item on this warrant that we could possibly defer is Article four, but it's. Such a minor trivial thing. I don't, I don't think it's gonna take time or exacerbate the agenda myself. I I think. I get the focus, but. I I I think we should approve it as is, but Jackie, do you wanna um, add another point?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I would like it to remain on on the warrant article. We start collecting dog money at the beginning of December. So I just think to have the bylaws clean and legal makes the most sense before we start. Taking money and then we're not out of any kind of compliance or. You know, auditors don't have to question us. I I think it just, it's it's very, I think it's gonna be a very uncomplicated. Simple vote and I don't think there's gonna be a lot of discussion at the special town meeting about it. And because we start collecting money in December, I think it's um, a good thing to just have it on the on the October one.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do we have a motion? You can stop sharing probably now, Jeremy. We have a motion relative to the um, warrant, the draft warrant.
I I already made the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Stephen?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
I am I as well. So now we can all go to Europe with Jackie. We're good to go.
That's right.
Thank you, Jack.
Our next meeting with Jackie. With uh, yeah, Jackie.
Oh, she wants to have fun. She wouldn't want us to be there. We're, we're good. So thank you, everyone. I think the warrant looks good. So thanks for your support, Jackie. Get Mr. Johnson back in here. Let's see if he joins. You there, Eric? You're back.
Yep, no, that was a quick five minutes.
Well, this will be, yeah, I know. We don't do anything simply, we, we get paid by the hour, so that's why. We're, uh, this will work out well though, cuz then you can probably participate in Article five and then you can probably um. We're finished. You can take the rest of the night off.
Yeah, the only other thing out there is a two hundred fifty of Wegmans, I think.
We did that already.
That's right.
I weave that in upfront. I was trying to weave that in, so we're good. So we're now gonna go to um. Item number um. Uh, what is it? Three, which is the reconstruction of Washington Maple Street. It's really about updated discussion and funding, I think. So. Uh, Jeremy or Sean?
Yeah, it's both of us. Um, I thought we could just start on the screen here is are the latest design plans. I thought Sean could give us. A little um, overview of the plans and where we sit as far as the design and the the history of the project. Uh, and then we could talk about some of the the costs and funding opportunities. So Sean, um, could you give us a bit of an overview?
I'd love to, thanks. So. As you see, maybe if Jeremy wants to zoom in a little bit, if you can. Uh, at least it's small and like, you can see that we we fit a roundabout in the, in basically in the current uh, road layout. That was a big concern for many, many years. Uh, and the old. Old school designs of of roundabouts or rotaries would have never fit, but uh, this one fits. Uh, there's no land taking, which was a big concern. And um. The 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 only, the only change to any, anything that anyone would see is there's a stone wall on the Maple Street, Washington Street corner. That gets reconstructed cuz it's not actually, thank you, it's not actually on the property line. So it'll get reconstructed onto the property line. Just to leave room for the intersection. This design is is now, it's basically ready for bid. We're not currently gonna put it out to bid because we have a contract with Lynch. Who has done our roadway construction for the past couple of years. They also. Um, through a different contract with a successful bid winner at Pine Hill School, so they built out the parking lot. And exit road at Pine Hill. We've been very happy with them. So we're excited to try to move forward under that same contract. Since we looked at this about six or eight months ago, we finalized the drainage design. Um, originally, we were targeting for like a seventy, eighty percent plan. And uh. We needed to do core samples. If anyone's noticed, you drive through, you see dig safe marks, you see some patches in the road. That was from core samples, both of the roadway, the subsurface under the roadway. And we basically had to do a profile of the gas line. There's a, there's a high pressure gas main that goes through this intersection. So it's critically important to know exactly how deep that is under the road. Because and Eric and Jeremy can, I'm sure both tell. Uh, plenty of stories about moving profiles of road. The gas company just ensures that they put enough cover over it and then if you go to move the road and you happen to change the profile by half a foot or a foot. You might end up being on the hook to move the gas line or or deepen it and that would be a lot of work and delay. So we.
Is this like the ten, sorry?
Go ahead.
Is this like the Tennessee high pressure? It's a high pressure gas main? I didn't know that was there, is it?
It it's a, it is. It's an eight inch gas main. Um, it's it's considered high pressure. It's not, it's not a, it's not a transmission line, but it's our main line down Washington Street.
Okay.
But it 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 proved out that we were deep enough to get the profiles that we were looking for. So that, that alleviated any extra cost or delay there. That that would delay the project. We have a very tight window. The intent here is to start. A project on a basically July first. Timeline and finish by the end of August so that we can hit the, hit the target when the buses aren't on the route. Because the, we're gonna have to close the intersection. Maple Street's gonna get closed, Washington Street's gonna get closed and we're gonna detour everyone. So that we don't stage the construction and we can only do that when school's not in session. So that plays to the timeline a little bit, which came up last time, is do we need to be talking about funding? In August or September? Well, we do, because the only way to pull off a project in July. Is for us to basically sign a notice to proceed sometime in November, December. So we really need to have the funding locked up. Well before the first of the year so that materials can start being procured. So that everything is staged and ready to go for July. Of twenty twenty-four. So that's the intent. Um, if Jeremy could queue it up, I think he's, he's got it also on his screen. We do have a funding, there's a funding analysis and. A a uh, price estimate from Lynch. Which is slightly dated, but I I did get confirmation that that it's still pretty accurate. There was some, that was. At about the ninety percent plan, there's some changes. Um, but it's not, the the number's not moving significantly. We've reduced some drainage work and um, added some fire hydrant work. It's kind of a wash. So that leads us to, can you go to the bottom of that, Jeremy?
Yeah, um, I can describe this a little bit here, Sean. On the, on the top here is the, is the project costs. So it shows the design and the construction costs. Um, and then below, there are two different options for, for funding. One without, uh, what we're waiting to hear is, um, we're waiting to hear from the Mast D O T regarding the small town road improvements and enhanced public safety, the strap grant for five hundred thousand dollars. We'll know that um, mid-October, we'll, we'll have a, we'll know that decision from Mast D O T. So there are two funding scenarios. One, assuming that we get that grant and the other that we don't get the grant. So in both cases, we're proposing to use the reallocation or the reappropriation of uh, the transfer station paving and the Pine Hill Access Roads to help fill the, the gap.
So one of the troubling things about looking at this is that our we're relying on diverting essentially all of our chapter ninety funds. In one case, for two years and the other case for one year. And that makes me a little uncomfortable because the, those funds are supposed to be available to maintain all the roads in the town. And if they're all going to this purpose, what funds do we have for the rest of the town? Wouldn't it be better for us to ask for the, an appropriation from the voters if necessary? And do a uh, a debt exclusion on some part of this funding, rather than taking all of the chapter ninety funds.
I think it's a little bit of a shell game because we actually appropriate additional funds to maintain the roads. What do we do? Like three, four hundred thousand, something like that?
We have around five hundred in total, I think.
Yes, we actually, we're gonna probably wind up using that to maintain the roads, or you could use that for this, you know what I mean? I think there's more flexibility in chapter ninety. Um, I, I actually like the idea though of going before the voters, as Paul said, because I think, um, I think this should, it feels like we're not getting approval for this. I feel as though something has to go before the voters. I really do. I get a little concerned that we're kind of using all, like, we're basically maxing out our discretionary money here. And because chapter ninety, we can just vote as a select board to do it. And I feel like I'm kind of bypassing the voters on this project as a whole. And given some of the angst from some of the uh, you know, library stuff, I just think that that we should actually appropriate funds as a standalone thing and, and so on with this. And frankly, maybe reduce some of what we allocate for our general
Go ahead.
I, I think this is the perfect opportunity actually to take to the voters exactly what we have. Um, it, it, there's a lot of opposition to creating more debt at a fall town meeting. Um, it's complicated. It's, it's not something we normally do. And I, I think we could satisfy both by rewriting some of the wording in the warrant and basically ask for this. And I, and I think this is what Paul was alluding to in the last meeting. Is we say, here's, here's our presentation. We need, we need to fund this roundabout. We're trying to get grants. Um, and we, you know, ma, we may or may not hear on that grant before town meeting. But we need to fund this project. Um, and come spring, we can fund more, you know, we can add more funding to the roadway management that we depleted from the chapter ninety if we need to um, for rehab of other roads. But we have the opportunity to use the funding that's already been basically committed by the town, both between the chapter ninety and the annual town meeting money to allocate to this project so that at some point, the town administrator can, can sign a notice to proceed to Lynch and at least get a commitment so that next July, we're building the roundabout, because nobody wants to see us push this out another year. Um, and the costs are just gonna escalate if we continue to push it out. And then we have some certainty in what we're doing and it, it helps us with our presentations through the winter and next spring for next town meeting. Because you're right, we will be playing a little bit of catch-up. And frankly, we are. Because I went into this town meeting knowing that I was asking for money that I didn't, I didn't commit it. I haven't come to the select board and said, I'm gonna chip seal this road and I'm gonna top that road. Because we have this uncertainty. So I, I think this is a good way to get some clarity. The select board can vote to approve it and town meeting can vote to approve it. Even if it's still pending some state funding, I, I frankly think the state should be on the hook for more of this intersection than they are. But we, we don't, we, we can't really not commit and sit around and wait for the state to just choose to pay for it.
Well, let me get, just to clarify for people though, I think that the, what, the thirty-five thousand and the one hundred and thirty-five thousand that are in the middle there, the transfer station paving Pine Hill Access Road remaining funds, that hundred and seventy thousand is already on the warrant, the fall warrant. And, and then we're, in both cases, you're planning to um, use the two hundred and fifty-one thousand of chapter ninety from fiscal year twenty-four in both scenarios. So the only issue is we either get five hundred thousand of the strap funding, or we use the fiscal year twenty-five, chapter ninety and uh, your roadway management uh, that would be in next year's budget. Or no, in this year's budget. So when will we know the strap? You said it's in October. Will it be for, be before the October town meeting?
It's gonna be right around that same time. They said mid-October, so it's, it's gonna be within days here or there.
So we, we are gonna have to have this be approved on the uh, spring town meeting, aren't we? We're either gonna have to agree to allocate the chapter ninety for twenty-five and roadway management from twenty-four, or we're gonna have the strap funding. Won't, won't we have to vote on it in the um, fiscal year twenty-five town meeting?
That'll be too late.
No.
But maybe not. I thought there was means you could access capital funds before the beginning of the fiscal year or after um, two weeks after they voted from town meeting. We don't often execute it, but I thought there was actually means to do that. So if you vote on town meeting in April and then they do the override vote at the uh, the May uh, whatever it is thing, I think, I thought we could access capital funds before July one.
Yeah, and let me clarify. So let me go through the, the actual funding without the strap grant. So that, and, and Jeff was correct. It's the five hundred thousand dollars is the delta between, you know, getting the strap grant or not. So if you don't get the strap grant, you have to make up five hundred thousand dollars. So the difference is um, that we currently have, we're in fiscal year twenty-four, so we currently have mass, the chapter ninety funds in hand for chap, for, for F Y twenty-four, for two hundred and fifty-one thousand. It, it's a foregone conclusion that we'll get next year's F Y twenty-five um, chapter ninety funds. Um, and we already have in hand, that was approved in the spring, um, the F Y twenty-four roadway management funds. And as Sean mentioned, we have not yet spent any of those funds that were approved at the springtime meeting. So there, there's, the only funds that need to be appropriated to fill in this gap are the reappropriation of the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Yep. And that's what's written into the draft warrant currently. So there would be no other town meeting appropriations necessary, um, given this funding proposal. We have, there was a prior approval, the prior town meeting um, in two thousand twenty-two, approved a hundred and fifty thousand for the design. Uh, we received previously a, a chapter ninety, I mean, a complete streets grant for three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that we have money in hand. Uh, we have F Y twenty-four, chapter ninety in hand. The two hundred and fifty thousand was appropriated at the springtown meeting.
Um, the only, it's not approved is that middle one there, the two fifty-one technically.
State chapter ninety funds that
Yeah.
I can't recall a year where the, the state has not committed chapter ninety funds.
Yeah, I understand.
In fact, there's rumors they may actually increase it finally. Who knows, this governor.
It will. We actually, and not factored in this, that's a good point, Eric, not, not factored in this, our chapter ninety allotment, this is based on the, the formula prior to uh, the current um, chapter ninety bond bill that was signed and the the, the, the budget that was currently adopted by the governor. Uh, both actually include some additional funds uh, that Sherbin will receive. So we'll receive some portion of a hundred million that came from the the so-called millionaire's tax that a hundred million dollars went into roadways. Uh, will Sherbin will receive a portion of that. And also the chapter ninety formula, uh, they added another twenty-five million to the two hundred million statewide that will be allocated based on roadway mileage um, favoring rural communities. So we will see an increase in our chapter ninety um, going forward and also get something out of the state budget as well from the um, the millionaire's tax.
Hopefully get a greater more millionaires per mile than other towns.
We don't get credit for that.
So Eric, did, did that cover what your concern was? I mean, I'm not sure where
It, it didn't, I, I understand what he said. But it's kind of like, my concern is still like the similar Paul, the way that you know, especially under the first scenario there, that if we don't receive the strap grant, we are burning through our, pretty much our annual maintenance. We really are. And that I, I think I would rather go to the voters and again appropriation, confirm maybe with Deb or I don't know maybe kind of the council that we can actually um, access capital funds after a vote of a spring town meeting and have it go before a vote. I, I just if you look at it, you know, without the strap grant, we're burning through like, just like I said, you know, two years of chapter ninety, our entire annual roadway maintenance uh, management. And frankly, who knows if this is consistent with the authorization of the roadway management, you know what I mean? It's not as broad as a town meeting that if someone, someone was concerned, they might actually protest that the town meeting vote did not include uh, putting those funds toward the, toward the roundabout.
Um, We sort of would have to do that anyway, because this is shown, um, now I guess the, the two fifty is the, is the uh, chapter ninety, you're right. So let's see what Stephen and Marion have to say. And Frank, I see your hand up. I'm just gonna go through the select board. Stephen? No, you're muted though, dude.
Sorry, I keep forgetting. Um, for what it's worth, and this is my recollection from um, when the town voted on that first a hundred and fifty thousand, and I was um, I was on advisory at the time. Um, but because I remember specifically asking about this and, you know, it was clear probably from Sean and whoever else was involved that um, you know, this was not yet another like feasibility study because that's already been done. We already knew um, you know, the, that, that this was necessary. And that this was the first step in effectively the project. And one of the questions that I had, I think at the time was, you know, what was the um, you know, the full cost of the project going to be and uh, you know, what, you know, when were we going to um, basically figure out how to fund it? And I think it was made clear at the time that you know, the funding for the actual construction um, would there was a possibility that it would come from a combination of chapter ninety from grants and then from um, the normal annual roadway management appropriations, which is to say that um, when town meeting passed that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, there was a possibility that essentially that was greenlighting the project and that you know, we would not have to come back to town meeting for another vote um, for the full funding, you know, like maybe we, we would have to, but maybe we wouldn't have to. So I, I feel that that first um, uh, funding scenario on top there um, is still consistent with essentially the messaging and the vote of town meeting um, for, you know, in for that hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Marion?
Yeah, I agree exactly with what Steve said. He, he had all the uh, details there, but uh, I feel that this project was approved uh, by town meeting. And I think uh, there's a value to just uh, getting her done. Uh, you know, there is a cost to delaying always. I don't know what that cost is in this case, but I'd be in favor of going ahead and allowing this to go ahead with uh, the plan that you have in place for funding.
Okay, thank you, Marion. Uh, Frank, i- i- is your hand raised from before or is it about this issue?
It's about this issue.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, it, it's more a clarifying question. I'm all for rotaries. But um, I'm familiar with the intersection. Is there any vehicles that are gonna be precluded once we put the rotary in, emergency vehicles or otherwise?
No.
It would be designed to accommodate all the current um, users of the roadway, Frank.
So tractor trailers, um, tree services and all that good stuff?
Correct. They would need to slow down to maneuver the roundabout, but that's by design.
Yeah, no, that's, that's understandable.
How about car carry, how about car carriers from a desk?
Unfortunately, they can still make it. They do have to mount the uh, the inner island, but it's, that's, that's the purpose of it.
Otherwise, that's good. They'd be on Western Avenue otherwise.
Uh, yeah, well, they're not, they're excluded from Western Ave. Um, if I could, I, I wanna make another point. Well, I wanna make the same point and reiterate it. Well, two points. One, we have the opportunity, if there's a question about the last spring's town meeting vote, we can reaffirm it with a vote. If we reword some of the article. Um, while we're approving the transfer station and the Pine Hill Access Road um, reappropriation, we can reaffirm um, last ATM vote. But more importantly, next spring is too late for a July construction. I, I wanna make it abundantly clear, we have to sign a contract notice to proceed with Lynch in December of this year. If we think we're gonna build in July, it's, it's an incredibly, incredibly tight timeline to build a roundabout on Route sixteen and close that road in July and August. Everybody wants Lynch to work on their roads in July and August. We, if we want that to happen, we have to sign that contract this year. So we have to come out of this fall town meeting with, with whatever we need to be able to do it, or it's gonna happen in twenty twenty-five. And there's a lot of people that are gonna be upset about that, mostly the voters. Um,
And we need to sign December to lock down Lynch essentially, to get Lynch on it?
Well, Lynch, yeah. I mean, if, if we, if we can sign in December, we, we'll have Lynch. And again, a lot of it's the materials. As of this year, we were told by the, by the um, the granite suppliers that if we didn't have a basically a notice to proceed before December fifteenth, we wouldn't have granite guaranteed on July first. That sounds ridiculous, but there's been a massive shakeup in that uh, market, so it, it may be better than it was, but it's, it's probably not much better.
Well, I'll definitely say that I'm very happy Lynch is on it and I'll, I'll vote for it if it means locking down Lynch. I have them, there's a lot of fly-by-night people out there and um, you know, I don't think they're bonded for a million bucks, but either way, I, I, I do want Lynch to do this job.
It, it's worth noting that it it's partially because of Lynch that we're reassigning money from Pine Hill School. That job came in under budget and on time uh, in a summer that was worse than this summer for trying to do construction because it rained constantly left that summer. They got flooded out at Pine Hill. They still finished it on time. They did a great job. And we have money to reassign to another project.
They're a good contractor. They are.
So could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Paul.
So is, is there any other money that we could add to this so that we would leave some chapter ninety funds? In other words, is there any free cash left that hasn't been spent? Is there, can we get a reserve fund transfer of like a hundred grand? Is there any ARPA funds that we could use to apply to this? Is, is there some uh, expense that we anticipated making that we now think we, we don't need to make? That we could transfer that to this project? Other than using chapter ninety funds? Have we done that kind of analysis?
Well, well, I'm gonna jump in real quick. I would not support either transfer or free cash since those, that's flexible and can be used for things beyond the flexibility of chapter ninety. I wouldn't support any of that because you can always pave a road with that anyway, you know what I mean? So I wouldn't support that. I absolutely support use of ARPA funds because you know, I've from day one have been against our pet project approach of that thing and putting it toward actual real projects that, you know, the, that the town meeting supported. And I would support any use of chapter, of our, our ARPA funds toward this project.
Well, a couple of things. One, we don't have to decide this now because we're gonna have to vote. If we, we'll know in October if we're getting the uh, strap grant. If not, then right now we're planning to use the vote uh, the um, chapter ninety from uh, twenty-five. We can vote at next year's town meeting to change that by using it could just be a capital request for, for this project at next year's town meeting. You know, wanted to start the project. I, I don't know that we have to decide this now is what I'm wondering.
I'm just sending a message to Jeremy and John. If you can find any ARPA funds, I will advocate.
Well, we just, that was my second point. We just got an hour ago, Deb just sent us the latest ARPA summary. An hour ago, Deb just sent us the latest ARPA summary, but I haven't opened it, but you know, we just allocated the money, the major piece of money left is going to the. Irrigation at Laurel Field. So that we've already approved that, so I don't know what the remaining balance is because she just sent it to us and I haven't opened it yet.
I know the uncommitted balance with relatively small, uncommitted, there might have been like sixty thousand dollars. I'm guessing. That that hasn't been reserved for. Future. Oh, here's.
Yeah, there's actually. You haven't voted on a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. You've discussed it about Laura Fields and Farm Ponds, but you haven't. Voted to give that to ARPA yet, so there really is like almost two hundred thousand dollars of uncommitted.
And I'll say just what I said before is that by, because ARPA funds are flexible and can be used toward things that people voted on by not doing that, we basically went around the citizens. And made our our pet projects without going before the city, before the town. And for money that could have spent, it's been the stuff they voted. So I'm gonna advocate for any. ARPA funds to go through this project. I love that idea. Thank you, Paul.
There's on the select board meeting next week is an ARPA discussion. Where all the department heads will be coming forward to to let us know where they stand and if they're going to have any. Unallocated unallocated funds left over as well.
Yeah, we can look at ARPA, but we can't stop doing that irrigation project. We're not defunding that because you see, we've already approved that and already spent half the money and now we're. Spending the remaining ARPA funds on the actual implementation.
Could you just make sure you clarify that that one ninety was not any of the reserved, you know, the amount reserved for any project? It does not include what was reserved for the.
It 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 wasn't voted on. There was discussed, the total three fifty was discussed. For the irrigation, but what you voted on so far is a hundred and sixty thousand. Based on what they find by whatever they're, you know, the different phases they're doing. But you haven't voted on the balance.
Understood, but it's sort of earmarked, so it's not really a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah, it is earmarked, but it's not voted on.
So Deb, if you. It's not earmarked.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You recall the amount that's not earmarked?
It's about twenty thousand.
Let's see how that meeting goes on next meeting.
It's two weeks, not next week, but you see, we authorized them to do the detailed analysis and their detailed analysis was what was going to tell us the. Actually drill the well, so that's why we didn't, why we had a large amount of money earmarked, but. Not defined yet because it took the analysis to invest. They had to do investigational wells to decide what was.
And I won't go against it if we committed if he said committed to something, but I mean.
We take your point, but there's not going to be a lot of ARPA funds. We can look at other sources or we can vote next spring on a capital. Amount for this project.
Well, I I won't, I won't support any reserve fund transfer to this over chapter ninety because reserve fund transfer is the most flexible money there is out there.
We have three hundred thousand every year, I believe, of reserve funds for all budgetary needs, so that's not much money to begin with, and there's probably going to be other needs for it.
I can also say pretty confidently that advisory would not approve a reserve fund transfer for this purpose.
Yeah.
It seems to me this analysis that we have before us. Is is pretty good. It's pretty rational. And I haven't heard any arguments. Against accepting this. Perhaps with the option if more funds fall in our lap from wherever. That they may be subs- some of this may be substituted out, but this is a plan to get the ground about done. And. I'm I'm in favor of it strongly. Get it done in summer of twenty-four.
Okay. I think we're in violent agreement again, and Paul, you can help us with your state expertise of the strap grant. You can get us. Maybe maybe we'll after Monday's Small Business Council meeting, we'll corner James Arena to roast, see if he can help us there.
There's other grants out there too.
Okay. Sounds good. I think I think we're good on this one. Then is any other comment that you want to discuss on? The Maple Street, Washington Street Roundabout? All right, thank you. Thanks, Sean. Our next agenda item, do you want to leave this off Marion is the. We have to send the comment letter in on Cooley Street Homes Project, one oh eight Cooley Street and.
Have a good night, guys.
Yeah, see you later, Eric.
I'm gone, all right.
Marion and I drafted, we got all, we got five boards and committees. We got input from the Board of Health Conservation Commission. Help me here, Planning Board. Groundwater Protection and Water Commissioners. Those are the five boards and committees that gave us input. And. The Mary and I drafted a select board letter to go along with it like we usually submit for all forty B projects. And it's you received it, I believe we were working on till yesterday, so I think you received it yesterday. And we'll have, we have to, we asked for a thirty day extension which we were granted, and so we're going to send the letter out tomorrow. I'm going to go sign the letter tomorrow morning.
So I'm good with the letter. I thought it was well written. Beautifully done. And it was short and to the point. And I'm ready to move approval.
I I had two little small, just small kind of. Potential. Say it changes in wording that don't change the meaning whatsoever. But just clarify a little bit. And if you're willing to trust those changes. That I will send to. To Diane and Jeremy and Jeff. They're really minor. But that's that's all I suggest. So I suggest a very small and insignificant amendment. It doesn't change.
I totally trust you, but I think we need to sign it at that ten AM time slot tomorrow morning. Could you send it to them? Say by first thing tomorrow morning so they can, they have to assemble the whole package, including. The documents. We just got tonight the final Board of Health letter because they gave us the draft letter. But they didn't have a Board of Health meeting till last night, so they. I think slightly tweaked their letter based on the, and they took a vote on it last night.
Right, but that doesn't change our letter at all. I don't.
But.
I don't have a final clean word version of this letter.
Is Diane or 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 Jeannie here? You could send her the final clean version, I think, can you?
Yes, we can get into tomorrow morning, Marion.
Okay, great. Then I'll make those two very small pages tomorrow morning.
They have things to do in the morning and we have Mike Hickam's funeral is at eleven, so I'm trying to be sensitive to some of the other time commitments tomorrow. And I think Diane has to go pick up her. So.
So can I make a motion to to approve the letter with the amendments proposed by Mary?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before we vote, Bob Murchison has his hand up, so you want to. Give us your thoughts, Bob?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. I just have three brief thoughts. The first is that I reviewed the letters and was particularly focused on the longest one, which was from the Board of Health. And what I would say is that. What was not discussed was the fact that I have been seeking and continue to seek. To have water and sewer from the North Sherbon Water District. On that property and that was not mentioned, you know, there was a lot of criticism of the of the potential project with no mention. Of the fact that, you know, I think there's a very good chance that property can have water and sewer. The second thing I would say is that the Board of Health Letter. I reviewed a full twenty-five paragraphs of it, twenty-five paragraphs of the Board of Health Letter. Were. Pulled verbatim from a letter that was sent about the apartment building project on Washington Street. The two projects couldn't be more different. And yet twenty-five paragraphs were copied and pasted into the letter. And I I think I I put a lot of thought and work into my proposals. And they're not cookie cutter. I mean, an apartment building and and twelve, you know, New England cottage homes are pretty different. And I think they deserve, you know, a real review and not copy and paste of twenty-five paragraphs. That's my second comment. My third comment and last comment is that the Board of Health Letter makes the point. That somehow drinking well water in Sherbon is a public health risk. For potential affordable housing residents. And what I would say is that what is a, you know, the greatest public health risk. For affordable housing residents is the lack of affordable housing. So we've got it backwards. The public health risk is to not having affordable housing for folks. And, you know, we can worry about the wells and we can do all kinds of work to make sure they are the cleanest they can be and in great water. But these folks who are going to come and live in these affordable homes, they're at risk because they can't have places to live. And so to be honest, I'm a little offended. By that kind of twisting of a conversation about public health and I thank you guys as always.
Thanks, Bob. I was gonna make a quick comment, but you want to go first, Marion?
Sure, I just have a quick comment. Bob, I understand, you know, we both know what you're thinking about on that property, but. I. Confirmed. With Kat Miller. From Mass Housing on that site visit. That. We would be and we should be. Evaluating what we have before us. Which is your proposal as proposed. And she agreed that that was what we should con- confine our analysis to, so that that's what we did.
Yeah, that was gonna be my comment, so you stole it. So. I think we're good then.
Any comments on public health?
Well. Marion, go ahead.
Well, I I could just comment that. The what the select board can tell you there is that the select board letter. Takes the. Points. Takes points out of that Board of Health Letter that are specific for this project. Or in general. For Sherburne, but so look at this select board letter. And what the Board of Health. Wrote, we're not debating here. We we use that to make a short summary. Of what we what we take as their input.
Yeah, I I was just trying to make the point that I honestly, I found it offensive. That, you know, you talk about well water hurting under resourced folks and it's a lack of affordable housing. That is the biggest determinant of their health. There's huge amount, you know this Marion, because you're, you know, in the. In the research world, if you look at public health research, the number one determinant of public health is a lack of a place to live.
Oh, you're.
Drinking well water.
Well, yeah, that's right, but still. If you're going to drink well water, we have to be sure that it's not contagious.
Absolutely, of course, of course. I get that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. So we'll, if you make that tweak, I'll I'll sign it at ten AM tomorrow, Marion, and then. Diane and Jeannie, you'll pull together the. Latest letters to submit with it and we can.
Yes, we will.
Can we vote on my motion?
Yes.
We have you vote and Steve already seconded, so I need them.
Steven?
Hi.
We'll call vote Marion.
Hi.
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, so one item left, which is the North Sherbon Water District and Marion is. Continue to make some very good tweaks to it along with. Our attorney, our town council. So do you want to describe? You know, the select board has already seen. The proposal. And I don't know if you need to go through the detail, maybe just some of the latest developments.
Yeah, that's what I want to do exactly. I don't want to start from scratch because you all know this story, but can I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Let me share a screen. There we go. Okay. Yeah, you've seen this one before. I'll just slide right past it. You know what we're talking about. The two. Developments on Coolidge Street. We've made some significant changes to the Water District legislation. On the basis of some really valuable input from a lot of people, including Bob, who's here tonight and the rest of the select board. And other boards, et cetera. So. There are just some sort of ground rules, some ground facts that we want to make sure everybody remembers. And that's that, you know, we agree these projects are good for Sherburne. Et cetera, et cetera. We know a water and sewer district is a prerequisite for getting water from Framingham. It's going to be paid for by the developers. Not only the infrastructure, but the fees that Framingham is requiring. And the developer will transfer ownership. To the Sherburne Water and Sewer District when it's complete, and that's been agreed. So the town won't own the water and sewer infrastructure. And there will be no impact on on people's property taxes. And you all pretty much know this already, but I had that in there in case other people are here. And you know about the special town meeting and the legislation, so I'll fast forward. That one of the major changes that we made are these. First of all. We agree and we're proposing in the legislation that the Water and Sewer District. Be defined right from the beginning as the area within this dotted red line. And this is all the properties that will abut the main water and sewer lines, which are here in blue. From Kendall Street. To the developments. And we've included these properties and these properties in the district. Partly because they're so close to the water and sewer line, but also because this whole area of town, as you know. Is probably the most vulnerable area. For potential contamination from general chemical. And we've heard a lot about that before. In the initial water and sewer service will of course be the developments. Because that who's that's who's paying for it. And they've agreed to include properties that already get water from Framingham. Which is all the properties in yellow here. Since the last presentation, I learned that. Sunshine Farm intermittently uses a small amount of water when needed. On some of their crops and they actually have Framingham water going to the field. But they they rarely use it because it's way too expensive to irrigate a farm with. But they use it in a pinch. And also these two properties, Sherburne Meadows, the condo development, age restricted. And the Sunshine Dairy Farm Stand and Store. Also are on Framingham Sewer and. We. Didn't realize that when we made the first, the first bypass of this. So these will be included right from the beginning. And as for all the rest of the properties in the district. That abut the power line, the the sewer and water lines. They will be allowed to join at any time at their own discretion. So let me go to the details of how water will be.
One point, man, do you want to just show them where the Cooley's Homes is right there in the propositional shape there?
Oh, right, yeah, this is Bob's property that we've just been talking about. No, we haven't just been talking about, we will be talking about even more. The Coolidge Street Homes, it's a. He's has proposed to the state and we're now. Going to be launching on the process for a forty B development here of. Of it's twelve, right, Bob? Twelve homes. In a sort of. Development, yeah. So. To fast forward to. Sort of the ground rules that we're working with here in trying to be equitable and fair to everybody in the district. It's good to know that the total water. Volume available from to Sherburne. Is being negotiated with Framingham and they're not willing to provide unlimited water. And the developer is not willing to pay for unlimited water. Because there is a cost that's based on the the volume and the amount of. Infrastructure in Framingham that needs to be improved. So that's a limitation. The gallons per day in the IMA limit. May need to be increased in the future. And if so, a revised IMA will have to be negotiated with Framingham and to. And if so, a revised IMA will have to be negotiated with Framingham and to approve a revised IMA is going to have to be approved at town meeting in Sherburne. So that's kind of reassurance to a lot of the people in the neighborhood that that area of town is not going to be open to wild and uncontrolled dense development. It's not. The IMA limit uh Sherburne's total ma- maximum capacity is going to be allocated in two major chunks. Uh, one, the base capacity will cover the gallons per day suf- sufficient for the new developments plus gallons per day that would be potentially needed if all the other properties in the district or uh join the uh join the water and sewer lines for their existing use. It's mostly single-family homes. But not all. We're also negotiating with Framingham an excess capacity. The actual amount hasn't been agreed yet with Framingham. The uh, this is the extra capacity that will be approved in the IMA over and above the base capacity. So the real question then is how can that excess capacity be used? Uh, first of all, properties in the district can be connected anytime in the future after the infrastructure is there for their current land use. And that's guaranteed in the base capacity that will be reserved for that. A change of use uh may well require more water. An extension of more water to any property will depend on the availability of the excess capacity. If there is sufficient excess capacity, the process is fairly simple. The Select Board and District Commission uh will approve that this is a good allocation. And if excess capacity is not available, then we have to renegotiate the IMA. And then the IMA has to go back to town meeting for a majority vote. So if properties are already connected to Framingham water, say for their current use, like a single-family home, and later they decide to change the use, uh this change of use rule still applies to all. Oh, so that's the group that you've seen before. I think uh you'll agree that those are significant changes and I think this is more workable, uh practically speaking, and uh more equitable. It doesn't close the door to changes of view, new developments with changes of views, but it places a sort of general limit by limiting the excess capacity on uh developments in that area. Our, our major goal here uh is to get this passed, get this passed town meeting, so we get a water and sewer district in place. And uh I think what we've come up with is a reasonable balance uh between protecting the area and allowing uh the development that we need in the area with a little more lea- with a little uh give to the water and sewer uh capacity. So that's, that's really a summary of how it's changed. Jeremy, you might wanna add to this.
Uh, thank you, Marion. I think you've covered it very well, very thoroughly. Thank you.
So, Select Board, what do you think?
So I had a suggestion for your consideration. Uh, generally, when I'm drafting legislation to create boards or committees, I try not to put on those boards and committees people who are have conflicts and have to recuse themselves. And in the committee that you have in the legislation, two of the members may have to recuse themselves on many issues.
You mean of the working group? It's not a, you mean of the working group or?
No.
The select would decide.
The, the Water Sewer Commission.
Oh, I see. Okay.
You have five members there. And, and three, I don't, I, I don't have any suggestions on, but two are essentially first to be picked by the developers who are paying the bills. I understand the logic of it. And then later on, it's going to be the residents of those two communities. The problem with putting them on there is the State Ethics Act says that people can't act on things where they have a financial interest. And if you're sitting on this board and you are, let's say representing a developer, you've got a, you can't, you can't vote. You're, you have to recuse yourself. You have to uh so the act says they're subject to two sixty-eight A, which is the State Ethics Act. But that means they're essentially gonna be non-voting on many different things, but differently for, for the two of them. So there'll be times when one member can't vote and the other one can't, and it's times where the other one can vote and the, the first one can't. Uh, a little tweak to the statute, which says that for purposes of of the State Ethics Act, it'll apply, but not, but still they can, they can vote on matters that affect their, their personal interest or some other way to allow them to participate is as I said at the very beginning of this the segment here, when I write this stuff, I generally don't put people on boards or committees who are conflicted because that often leaves, leads them into uh unintentional violations.
Uh, Paul, can you, can you explain a little more why residents of the communities, what would their conflict be if they were residents and were serving on the commission?
Uh, well, both financial in terms of that, I assume they're gonna be paying water rates and sewer rates. And therefore they might be motivated by reducing those costs and reducing those costs uh that may or may not be in the, in the, the best interests of the district.
Oh, yeah, that's an interesting point. Uh, Paul, what do you think an alternative would be?
Just to go with the three. Not the five. Make the other two like ex officio, non-voting members or something like that.
But that would, with the, the three, uh as we have it now, uh would be all appointed by Sherburne. And Sherburne doesn't own the infrastructure, so uh would Sherburne not also have some conflicts of interest there?
Well, that's why I said one suggestion is to is to include in the legislation a tweak that would address the state conflict of interest law, so that would allow conflicted people. I mean, I, 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 I see this in other communities where people wanna solve a problem, so they say, let's get, you know, all the stakeholders on a, on a board or a committee. So you put all the stakeholders on it. Well, every one of them is conflicted out because they're stakeholders and by being stakeholders, you, by definition, you have a financial interest or you're representing or employed by somebody with a financial interest. It's, it's just one of those quirks in the State Ethics Act, which you could fix in the legislation through drafting language, or you could fix by not having conflicted people on the on these board, boards and committees. And to the extent that this is a public agency and a public board, you're you're better served with people whose interest is in the public and not in the private owner's interest.
Right. Uh, I, I do the uh, do the users of the Water District, do the people in the Water District uh not need to have some representation?
Well, if you look at most Water and Sewer commissions, you'll find there is no representative of the users on there because they may be conflicted up. You know, if you want good pressure in your area, you may not want uh any water to be diverted somewhere else. Or if you are concerned that your water rates are too high, you may welcome the water going someplace else so that your rates are lower, even though it may be something horrible. It, it.
Oh, would that also uh hold true for, say, a, a homeowner? The, the condo development, for example, will have a homeowners' association. The uh rental apartment might have a, a rental occupants' association. Uh, it, it would still, the, we have the same problem if e- either the HOA or the Renters Association uh elects a representative. It's the same problem, right? Doesn't get around the problem.
No, and, and, and you get into other interests where, you know, so they, they have their condo and, and suddenly somebody nearby wants to do something and they don't want their view blocked cuz they have a nice view out their window. And, and then they use their position on this board to, to block water and sewer for that that particular thing cuz they don't want their view blocked. It, it just creates so generally, when I do this, I don't, I don't put people who are quote stakeholders on the, the boards, but if you're going to put a stakeholder, and that's a political decision for, for your group to make. But if you're gonna put, I'm just speaking as a lawyer now, if you're gonna put the, them on, you gotta, you, you gotta say notwithstanding the State Ethics Act, not that they shall fully comply with the State Ethics Act because they're gonna be they're gonna be intersection points where they're gonna have to walk out of the room and not participate. But you have them on the committee because you want their input.
Okay.
So I think we can ask Tom Mullen to sort of tweak the language. I mean, if you, if we convey this to Tom, Marion, don't you think that?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
Paul's suggestion of referencing the Ethics Act is what he's saying, I think.
Yes, yeah, that's one alternative.
Yeah, that's great. Paul, would you be willing to uh send me some language that you think would cover that?
Yes, but I'm, I'm like in the middle of a, of a crisis uh with the, some deadlines that I've gotta uh do, so it'll be next week, not this week.
Okay, well, oh, our, our special counsel should be able to figure that out.
Yeah, I think that's probably better anyway. Can't afford Paul's rates either.
Yeah, zero.
Thank you, Paul. That was a good suggestion.
That's a very good point. I think I agree. I'm glad you mentioned it. Okay, so I think we've uh now got all up to date and where it stands. I think it, as Marion pointed out, we've been sensitive to input and um trying to make it a more inclusive and uh better thought-out um proposal, in- including the language um uh that we're proposing to be on the town meeting for the legislation. So do the Select Board have any other uh comments? I don't know, we don't need to vote on this, I don't think, do we, Marion?
No, no.
Well, the voters are gonna, we'll, we'll be a voter too, but the voters will vote on it in uh.
Yeah, that's right. But uh I, I did uh send out to you and it will be posted on the town website, at least by tomorrow morning, a public information uh four-page thing with maps and uh explanations in, that explains in details and tries to make the main points that we're making here. So uh if you can, anyone who's on this call, please spread the word because we do want people to come to town meeting and weigh in on this. And uh we want them to have read this public information and, you know, pose questions early rather than late at town meeting, so we can get it right and get it passed.
Part of that will be talking to Dan, I think, and seeing how they, how we, we have that warrant article there, but how advisory, obviously advisory public hearing will happen and they'll write their recommendation.
Oh, yes.
Either for no action or, or supporting it, so. So that, a lot of people rely on that in, in how they vote.
So I don't hear any uproar about this. Does it look pretty much okay?
Yes.
I think it does, but I've been in the middle of it with you. All right. I think that covers the agenda other than the, um, we already approved the consent agenda, so the only thing remaining is the Select Board report and Town Administrator report. Are there any Select Board?
Good question.
Yes.
Can we get an update on the, the railroad uh gates? I, I thought they were going in in September. Do we know anything?
On so long here, I think that there was a, uh, it's availability of the gates. It's not really like a labor issue. It's a getting the materials for the gates. I think they, I, I don't, I don't remember what it is, but I'm pretty sure they have a a date in mind. Are you still there, Sean, or you? You might have just hopped off.
Yeah, I think he's gone.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, Jeff, I think that's my understanding as well. The, the date might, may have shifted a little bit from September, but it's still supposed to happen this, this fall, the installation of the gates. We can, we'll get a date for you, Paul.
Well, not just for me, but for the, for the
Oh, yeah, for everyone.
People have to drive.
Yeah.
All of us who live in South Sherber drive across those railroad tracks and
Yep.
We'd like to know when we have to plan for delays.
I don't think it'll involve as big of an outage or, or a shutdown as last.
Yeah, I think it won't be a full detour like it was previously for the, you know, the grade crossing installation. And there might be some, you know, daily lane closures, but it won't be as impactful this time around. But we'll, we'll get an updated date to be able to get out to folks.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll do it in non-rush hour times and everything, so. Marion?
My hand is up for a reason. Somebody keeps trying to lower my hand and I won't let it happen.
It wasn't me.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to uh add something that's related to affordable housing. This isn't exactly a Select Board report. It's a Select Board heads-up, I guess. Um, when we when uh to be optimistic, when we get uh more affordable housing in town, uh there is a provision in the forty B law that allows town select boards to uh request or demand, I don't know exactly what the right word is, a local preference of up to seventy percent, last time I looked. Seventy percent of the uh affordable units can be earmarked by the Select Board for people that they want, pe- uh local people that they want to have the advantage to get those affordable apartments. You know, people obviously would have to be eligible for the, uh, according to the state rules, but uh the Select Board can define a uh preferred or advantaged list of candidates because you know it's a lottery. People enter a lottery to try to get those apartments. And if you're in the general lottery and there are a lot of applicants, uh, it doesn't matter where you're from, but the Select Board can designate certain amount of spaces, certain amount of residential units to uh whoever they define. And usually that's uh local residents who want to downsize or a nuclear family members of, of Sherburne residents or town employees, including the teachers at the school uh or that sort of category. So um in advance, we should be thinking about that. We don't have the units ready to be designated like that, but we should talk about how we're gonna do that when the time comes at, at a future meeting.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Have we done that for previous uh forty B projects?
Um, let's see, is Addie May still on? Yes, she is. Addie? Oh, employees, yeah.
I mean, I, we definitely didn't do it, I don't think, for the Fields of Sherber, whatever that's called now, the one on Hollison Town Line, I don't think. I wasn't on the Select Board at the time, but.
I don't recall uh how that went either. Yes, oh, Addie's uh texting me. Yes, we did it for Whitney Farms. I don't recall how that went either. Yes, oh, Addie's texting me. Yes, we did it for Whitney Farms.
Okay, that makes it.
Addie is stuck on mute, that's her problem. She would, she's here, but she can't talk. So, yes, they did it for Whitney Farms. Maybe she's going to tell me in a moment whether they did, but the Fields.
I just clicked Ask to unmute, but I think it's, she's got to do it. I can't do it.
Anyway. See, my outfit, sorry, I'm in the car waiting on kids getting out of the Big Fish production at the community center tonight. I know we did at Whitney Farms, that was negotiated, because I remember the lottery was, they held two separate lotteries. The first lottery was for the local preference, and then the second lottery was everybody else. I know it was discussed for the fields, but I don't recall a hundred percent whether we actually got that far on the comprehensive permit. I believe that would be where they might have been able to, you know, put that request in. That's, that is just that, like Marion said, that's something that needs to be discussed. I am not a hundred percent sure what stage that request gets made, because the developer goes up, goes forward, and they hire an agency to run the lottery and run that whole process, so.
Yeah.
That is something that we should discuss at a future meeting.
Yeah, we should bring it up. I mean, according to the law, as I read it, it's the select board that designates kinds of people that we want in the preferred seventy percent. And, yeah, but that would be good to look into. If we have that, if we have the select board preference agreed upon, then we can have a document ready to go whenever we have a chance to submit it. So, yeah, for a future meeting.
Okay. And so I, I don't see any other select board reports. You don't have anything, Steven's idea? So Jeremy, do you want to update us with some of your?
Yeah, I just have two quick updates for, for the board. Just wanted to relay that the Board of Health did approve the Laurel Fields irrigation wells, at least the installation at their meeting last night, so they approved the Recreation Commission to, to have their vendor install two irrigation wells and to start the testing of those irrigation wells. The Board of Health did request that they essentially created like a three-phased approval process, so they've approved the first phase, which is the installation of the wells and the initial testing. Then they wanted to have some input at another meeting regarding, you know, how, how the, the wells would be tested longer term. And then they also, depending on what is found as far as the yield of the water and the quality of the water, they wanted some input and approval on the operations and maintenance plan of the, the irrigation site, so. But just wanted to relay that the Board of Health did approve, at least to, for the Board, for the Recreation Commission to move forward with the installation of those two wells to begin the testing. And then I guess more on the topic of water. We got some unfortunate news as far as our PFAS testing for the town hall campus water supply. The August results, so earlier in August, we, we did our sampling for PFAS, and unfortunately, just received word that that has exceeded the limits, over twenty parts per million or per trillion, I'm sorry, coming in at twenty-four, so that now puts us with two consecutive months in this current quarter that are over twenty. We'll have September testing in the, in the beginning of September, when those results come back in, if, if the average of those three months in the quarter is over twenty, which it seems like it's trending that way, then we would actually be receiving a notice of non-compliance for the PFAS regulation from SDEP, which would then likely trigger us to have to put in, put together a formal action plan. The good news is that essentially our action plan is already implemented. We provide bottled water for all the, 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 the users of, of the water that, that those wells service. And additionally, we would also outline what our plans are to actually, you know, longer term address the, the issues, so. Hopefully, we'll be hearing soon about funding from SDEP from the federal government for small communities to address PFAS. I think we have an opportunity to get several hundred thousand dollars to go towards, you know, helping the town hall campus water supply, so. We just don't know the rules of how to apply for that as of yet, but we should hear in the coming months. And related to PFAS, the federal drinking water standards may be promulgated towards the end of this year, which would then set an even lower limit than what SDEP currently sets, and that would become the new, new rules of the game. So that, that's still in flux, and we're not exactly sure how that would be rolled out from EPA to the state level, but there would be some delay in that of about a year or so. But just wanted to relay, we're, we're not trending well for the town hall campus wells. We're likely going to not have a, we'd have to get something well below twenty to get an average in the last, for those three months to be lower than twenty, so we may get a violation.
Do you know, police and obviously the library and town hall have bottled water. What about community centers? Isn't the community center also on that well?
I believe they are.
We should just double check that they, I'm not sure.
It was the library, and the library has bottled water.
Yeah, they do, but the community center isn't regularly populated anymore now that the library moved out, but if they have like a children's movie or some other event.
Right.
We may need to just see if they have bottled water available there.
Yep, we can confirm that.
And, and obviously confirm that they're on, I think they're on, Sean would know, but I think they're on, or Tom Trainor's got his hand up. Do you want to straighten this out here, Tom?
Thank you, Jeff. I can add, I'm, I'm actually on the, the board of the community center. We, for months now, since we knew of all the PFAS issues, have gone to bottled water there at the community center.
Okay, I just want to make.
And, and have maintained the consumer warnings in every, every spot that's close to a water outlet. And, and actually, if I could ask Jeremy a question, given, given the, the clear trends that you've seen, you know, close to two, two years now in that well, you, you know, even, even if you, you, you don't cross the violation stage, can more be done to educate all the people that come into those four buildings about the, the health risks?
Yeah, I mean, there's public education with this new exceedance for, for October, I mean, for August, EPA or DEP will require us to do another round of public education, but in this case, their only requirements are that we post within the building for the users that, that may use the water, so I think it's, it's a matter of putting those, that warning or the, the notice in, in an area for, for folks to see. I think the risk is actually relatively low. I mean, I think of the use of town hall, really, nobody's consuming the water. They're, if they're, they're drinking water from the bubbler, there's no cooking of food, there's no kitchen, so the, the the exposure to PFAS is ingesting it, not washing your hands, not you know, using it for some other purpose. It's, it's the ingestion, and really, none of the facilities that are served by the town hall wells, you know, really to have a have that pathway. I think the risk is relatively low, but.
I, I agree with that.
There's probably ways we could, could advertise the, the notice a little bit more, make it a little more prominent.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, Jeremy, but two things. One is, as you know, and I just want to make sure all the select board know, the new EPA limits of four part per trillion, you know, are, are a real jump from, so every, every monthly testing you've had at the town well is over those, and also the new health advisory limits from the EPA are in the parts per quadrillion range. The health advisory, so, you know, you're, you're talking about a major health concern with the concentrations, and finally, you know, another thing I wonder if you and Sean are starting to consider is we do have public wells with PFAS in the ten to fifteen per per trillion range there at the elderly housing, and the affordable housing, Woodhaven and Leland, and so those people are living with that water.
Well, we, we have to look at, I've seen the recent numbers, Pine Hill School also.
Yeah.
I think it's, well, Pine Hill's number's been below twenty, but they're not below four, I don't think.
Well, Pine, Pine Hill's been running total PFAS six, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I think, I think they've always been below the four per per trillion of PFOS or PFFA.
Okay, components.
But I share your concern, Jeff, because the new health advisory is four parts per quadrillion.
Yes.
A thousandfold lower than what we're talking.
And the population is obviously much greater there. They're younger, which would be, be a longer life span, and, and there's much higher population than the other buildings.
What's interesting, as far as what's regulated by the PFAS regulations from, you know, and what would be under the new EPA guidelines as well, you know, one of the more, I don't know, critical sites for, for us, as far as, you know, we have, at the, the fire station is not regulated for PFAS. However, it does have PFAS, so folks do stay there overnight. I'd, I'd be more concerned about the, the water supply at the fire station than I would be at, they at town hall, just based on the use. However, there's different regulations that apply.
No, that's exactly correct, and that number is the highest of any we've seen in town. It's around sixty or sixty-five parts per trillion.
Jeremy, do we know, just kind of ballpark, long-term, like if there's a need for, you know, mitigation treatment of water, like what, what's ballpark cost for that to, presumably it's some sort of a filter, filtration or something?
Yep, we've gotten some quite cost estimates for the town hall water supply. If I recall correctly, it was on the order of three hundred thousand dollars, give or take. But again, that doesn't address things at the fire station or, or, you know, other locations.
Sure.
And that, that was an estimate not based on any kind of bench testing or, you know, actual water testing and sizing of filters. It was a.
Yeah, no, I just want to get a.
Educated estimate.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Tom, what is the technology? Isn't it some kind of carbon filtering?
Yeah, there's, there's three main areas, carbon filtering, reverse osmosis, and ion exchange, but as Jeremy just mentioned, you'd, you'd have to get a expert engineering firm to
Yep.
do, do a bunch of testing and design. But I, I think, you know, if I can predict the future, I think you're going to have to have treatment systems on every public well supply in this town.
Do we know where the PFAS are coming from?
Great question.
Great, great question. Hasn't been detailed studies, but in, in the concentration of septic and cesspools adjacent to most of these public wells, and adjacent to some residents that are seeing PFAS. For this town, our septic systems are high on the list. And, and, and number two, with the, with the fire station, you know, I believe, I believe the fire department got rid of all their A triple F years ago when the state was phasing it out, but you know, with mutual aid and everything, people are fighting fires in different towns. They may have brought back some and got it into the septic systems. The other thing, there's a, there's a clear kind of corollary with the downtown, some of the older service stations and, and kind of commercial, you know, waste handling was not that great thirty, forty, fifty years ago when PFAS first started coming out, and none, none of us knew these issues. There's a good chance some of that got into the ground at that time.
Okay.
Sorry to end with the, the bad news, but.
No, but it's good to make people aware of it, you know. All right, so I, I would suggest that I solicit a motion to Paul accepts money and closes meeting, that's. So is there a second?
Second.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Aye.
I am, I as well. And so, don't forget, Mike Kickum's funeral's at eleven AM tomorrow, and I waited an hour and ten minutes in line at the wake, so I would get there early if you plan to attend a funeral, because there, there's a lot of people, including, I reached out to a lot of people because I knew Mike pretty well, but a lot of people who no longer live in town that came back to, to the funeral home, a lot of people. So, that was good to see, but it, it, I don't know what the capacity of St. Teresa's is, but I've got the deacon reserving the Boy Scouts a pew. So, that's where we stand. So, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Now, see you to sign things in the morning, Diane.
Night.
Ciao, guys.
See you.
Have a great weekend.
Bye-bye.